This conference will now be recorded.
Beautiful. I am going to open up this first ever virtual finance meeting for the city council. We're only about three minutes late and I will ask everyone to stand for the pledge of allegiance. And I believe council member Gully has a flag which he will present. And why don't you lead us up, council member Gully?
He muted.
I just can't hear you. You didn't hear me. I was muted.
Why don't you start over, council member? Go ahead.
Let's go, guys. My pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
To America.
To the republic.
Republic. Our nation under God. Indivisible, with liberty, in just for all this.
Yeah, that doesn't work well.
No.
It was fine.
We'll have to do it pre-video, I think.
It was fine. It was fine.
We'll sync them up later.
Yeah. And now she'll take care of it. We'll do a quick roll call. Council member Gully?
Present.
Council member McPherson?
Present.
Council member Steele?
Here.
Council member Cummings?
Present.
Welcome back. Council member Zalinski?
Here.
Hello. Council member McDermott?
Here.
And council president Mantello, I'm here. Thanks all for joining and, you know, certainly this is very different and unique times and circumstances. And I think all of us have been working really well with the mayor and thank you for joining us, mayor. We also have Andrew Petreski here with us and Jim Caruso, our corporation counsel. We do have an NA. I'm not sure who that is. And we also have our clerk on this virtual finance meeting. So before we get rolling, the two items that were on the finance meeting, we had an ordinance and a resolution for CDBG funding. Obviously, because we're unable to have a public forum, Carolyn Scrippsack, who oversees this program, is going to have a public forum on Monday, which folks can call in from any time 10 to 11 a.m. And they can also email her. So her phone number is (518) 279-7150. Her email is carolyn.c-a-r-o-l-i-n dot scripshak, s-k-r-i-p-t-s-h-a-k at troymi.gov. And what we'll be doing tonight is just setting this up for a 30-day public comment period. So it's for introduction only. We will not be passing or acting on any legislation other than at the regular meeting, we'll amend the resolution with the technical amendments that I had sent earlier. So if everyone's good with that. And this will be for the five-year plan, the draft plan, and the draft action plan. And so we'll get that information to everyone. Carolyn actually did an attachment and we'll send that to everyone if you want to post it, get it to your neighborhood organizations, and, you know, circulate that so folks can call in on Monday. Okay? All right. Everyone's on mute that I see. And, you know, I guess I'll hand it off to Andy. I did have some things to say, obviously, about our first responders and the circumstances we're under. And possibly if the mayor wanted to just fill us in on anything of urgency and updates, and we can do that at the regular meeting if everyone's good with that. And we'll roll right into Andy's draft presentation. Before we go into that, Mara, have we received any public comments?
Only the one that you had, that you sent earlier, and that was forwarded to the entire council.
Perfect. Okay. So just for the record, a Satri resident, I believe she's going to call in on Carolyn's forum on Monday. So she had some questions about the CDBG and some suggestions. So we'll hand it off to Andy. And I thought Andy will let you roll right through. And then if everyone's okay, we'll go through questions and answers. Why don't we, we'll stop after the general fund and we'll ask Q and A. Then we'll go into the water fund, then we'll go into the sewer fund if that works for you.
That works.
Okay. Thank you, Andy.
All right. So I am sharing my screen if you do not have a copy of the documents with you. So these are the results of the four operating funds, general, garbage, water, and sewer as of yesterday. These numbers are going to change before we file. Ideally, they won't change much, but we do continue to reconcile, just so the council is aware, and an update of the AUD on its entirety. This week, we began the process of entering. Given the situation we are under, it will take the entire month to enter the AUD. There is no way around that this year. We're still actively working on reconciliations. I'm hopeful we can get those done in the next two, two and a half weeks. But taking everything into consideration, barring something unforeseen, we will file on time on April 30th. We've asked the state comptroller's office multiple times if there's any discussions of extending the due date. And their response is it's set by legislation and it cannot be moved. So tonight, I'm going to go through the revenues, expenditures, and then a recap of the results for each of the funds. And just to note, so the council is aware, Bonadillo, our independent auditors, have remotely started working on the audit. They are scheduled to come in at the end of June. And as things currently stand, they will still be in once this situation ends. So looking at general fund revenues. Total general fund revenues were 70, again, as of April 1st for 2019, $72.3 million. That is a decrease from 2018 of 3%. And 60.7% of the total budget. Each of those are driven by a specific item that I will explain throughout this discussion. There are eight areas and revenues. And I will try to point the mouse to each one that I'm talking about as I go through that I wanted to discuss. The first is real property taxes, $24.6 million for 2019. Obviously, with tax rates fluctuating year to year, the real key note to look at is the collection rate. We collected 96.1% of property taxes in 2019. That is on par with the trend that we have seen since fiscal year 2016. The second area is local sources. That is 20 points, just under 20.7 million. An increase of 430,000 or 2% in 2018, and it went over budget $575,000. The main majority, the majority of revenues in this area is sales tax. That total ended up being $17.3 million, exceeded the adjusted budget total. Sales tax is very volatile, obviously, as we're seeing now, which is why that number is budgeted conservatively year to year, and it is reviewed and approved every year by the state comptroller's office. Other revenues in that area include pilots, interest on taxes, which I just want to note was down from 2018 by over $150,000, which coincides with the collection rate, but also shows that when it was paid, it was paid on time. It was under budget, but as we'll talk in water and sewer, I'm not necessarily opposed to interest and penalties being under budget on an annual basis for cash flow reasons. The next area to discuss is health. Sorry. There we go. Health. Total revenue, $2 million. It's a decrease of 11% from 2018.
Andy, I do apologize. Maybe on the big ones, it's probably, I'm so sorry, easiest to hit questions if they, if folks do have questions on the real property taxes or any of the prior categories before you get into health. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, good. Andy, I did have one question on public safety. I did notice, let's see, I apologize. Okay. We budgeted 899K for that. Is there a reason? I know in 2018 it was up a bit. And we're 82% shy there. Is there any particular reason on that one?
Vacant building fees. We're short or under collected than were anticipated. What we see with vacant building fees now, we really have a trend. Probably looking back at the last four to six years, if you look at it in two-year runs. So 2019 will be year one. People do not pay that fee in the current year when it is built by the city. 2020 will be year two. And you will see a bump, I would anticipate, because the vacant building fees re-levee down to property taxes, and then it gets paid. So we will have to adjust the budget accordingly going out into the future years. But that's, that is the cause for the decrease in that category.
Okay. And Andy, I apologize. Bump him back up to local sources. Do you have a number on the pilot? Okay. Was that, okay, 969 we estimated, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Council president?
Yeah, Kim. I'm sorry, council member Ash.
Andy, I'm sorry. You two are yelling off numbers, and I don't see where you're getting these numbers from.
The report you have in front of you is a summary, summary report. There's various numbers of accounts that go in, that go into each category. I have each individual count up on a screen behind my laptop that I'm looking at.
Okay. So I'm sitting here thinking, I'm looking at the paper, I printed everything out, and I'm like, I don't know what the hell they're talking about, because I can't see it. Thank you.
And council member Ash McPherson, if you look, for instance, like public safety, if you go into your budget, it itemizes public safety out. So for instance, it's like demos. And so if you go into your budget, it itemizes it. But Andy, if we ask under that category, he'll have it broken down. Okay?
Thank you.
Yep, no problem. Go ahead. Did anyone else have questions? Okay, we'll hit health, Andy. Thank you.
So health, there is a decrease from 18, and there is a shortfall in the budget that's created entirely by ambulance billing and your third-party collection company. In January 1st of 19, we had switched companies. There was, for a multitude of reasons, one of which was the collections being down. In this third quarter of last year, we terminated that contract effective December 31st, 2019. We went out to RFP. We had, if I remember correctly, four to five responses. After a review between the fire department and the comptroller's office, we selected a vendor, Comstar Billing. They were the city's prior collection company. They're a party billing company as well. We have re-engaged with them for 2020. And all inclinations look like collections are improving thus far in just a very brief look. So that's the cause of that category's change. Transportation, total revenue.
Kind of disappointing, you know? We've always done so well with it, you know? But it's not, it's not your fault. I'm not saying that.
No, luckily, we were able to terminate the contract and move on. And hopefully, it will get better. Transportation, $893,000. It's a 30% increase from 2018 and exceeded budget by $238,000. There was an increase in revenue in garages, lots, meters, and towing. It came from all four sources. Recreation, $852,000. It was short on the budget number. You can attest that to the spring weather at the golf course. But there was a $93,000 increase or 12% over 2018 attributable to the golf course. We did increase fees to align them to other courses in the area, which was done again in 2020. Homing community services is zero for 2019. That is all revenues that were in the general fund until January 1st, 2019. They are all now in the garbage fund. That is the entire reason why revenues are down in the general fund from 2018 to 2019. They are just in a new fund. And obviously, the garbage fund, we will discuss next after general.
Okay. And real quick, did anyone have questions on the recreation?
I have a question.
I thought, is that council member Zalinski or Gully?
Yes.
Hi.
I had a question if we can go back to transportation. Andy, you indicated garages and lots were part of that. Now, I think we've got a couple garages that are not at full capacity right now. And of course, our parking meters, we're not charging people for parking during this period of time. So how do we anticipate that the lack of spaces in some of our garages and the lost revenue in parking, and in towing, actually, because I don't think we're towing people, do we have any estimates on how that's going to impact us?
I'm going to answer that question on a much more macro level, if that's okay. I think, you know, we're going to see a very significant impact in a lot of different areas. What it looks like for, my concern right now is certainly the parking and the meters. My bigger concern is sales tax, and it's the state aid. And I think everyone knows that Governor Cuomo mentioned that aid may be reduced. And my understanding is the budget, state budget has a clause in it that it will be reevaluated throughout the year. Sales tax. I'm interested in seeing in two weeks if there's, when the state puts out a report on monthly filers, if we, you know, to look at what the change is. What this, what the impact is to the general fund, truthfully, it keeps me up a lot later at night than I would like. And I'm not trying to be dramatic by any means. I can't fathom right now what this is going to look like until we start seeing some data. We're trying to run comparisons to see what the hit is, just the little areas like that. Some people are still paying their parking permits to hold their spots until this ends. I will say that. We're working through, for those individuals, how to get them paid, either by mail or by credit card over the phone. I don't know if that answers your question. I know I kind of went off topic a little bit. It's everywhere in the city that this is a risk right now.
Yep. Now, that answers my question. And I understand that we, nothing's for certain right now. There's no way to know exactly what's going to happen. And I do, I appreciate the fact that you are, that this is keeping up at night. These are things that would, if I was in your position, I'd be up at night as well. It's, I am, I'm very concerned about, you know, the impact this is going to have on our city. And of course, cities all across the region. But yeah, it's pretty serious.
Yeah, and it's everywhere. It's, I've talked to a school business official in the northern part of the area who's doing his budget right now, and quite honestly, is, doesn't know, not that he doesn't know what to do, he doesn't know what his revenues look like because of everything that's ongoing. So it's, I mean, I think it's not specific to Troy, obviously, which I think in some ways is a positive that there are people in my position at schools and local government can discuss, are in the same boat. So there can be a common discussion amongst everyone.
Yeah. And, you know, obviously, it's, we're going to be in the same boat as so many other municipalities, school districts. They can be certain they're going to get a hit. And the budget that they pass kind of keeps everything right now status quo. But like Andy said, there is a clause in there that as this moves forward and as the year goes on, the fiscal year, that the governor can cut and reduce various expenditures. So, and, you know, there's another clause where the legislature has 10 days. But it's, I think all of us are very, very concerned and very worried. And we just have to take it day by day.
Are there any more questions about any of the areas I just touched upon? Licenses and permits. There was a decrease of, well, the total, $914,500.
Well, Andy, I don't think you hit intergovernmental.
Intergovernmental charges. So that's primarily of payments from the Troy IDA for staff, school resource officers from the school districts, and another payment from the school districts for civil service, a payment from the county for tax processing, and a couple other little things. The number was on par with 2018. One of the areas, so it's a shortfall in budgetary revenues, you'll see. This is an area that we're still actively reviewing to make sure we have everything booked. So this is, this is one of those areas that I touched upon at the beginning, that it, that will change most likely before the final filing.
Okay, that's good, because I noticed $87,000. I was wondering if it was maybe the SRO reimbursement or something to that nature. Okay.
It's just making sure we have everything booked, which we're beginning to do that final review now for these four funds. Use of money and property, just to note that, that increase is primarily from interest on bank accounts. And we pioneer, had given us very good interest rates on a lot of our accounts. That's the first area. The interest rates have been adjusted because of the change in the federal interest rate, as was expected. The other thing that's booked in this category, which is material, is, so the city's, the city's accounting records records all activity of Troy MAC. Troy MAC invests money, or yeah, invests money that they earn interest on that offsets our cash contribution for the debt. They made over $100,000 in interest in 2019, which is continuous of what they continue to do on an annual basis. Licenses and permits. The $914,500, it's over budget, $77,000. But a decrease of 11% from 2018 that's driven entirely by building permits, just the level of activity from 18 to 19. But as you can see, that was anticipated as part of the budget process. The deputy mayor does a very good job of working with code and engineering to math out what anticipated projects are coming in in a fiscal year. And that's how we budget that to ensure that we are accurate in that area. Moving on to the next, the next category I want to touch on is intra-fund revenues, unless if there's questions on anything above that.
No, I saw that that was down. I have it on my.
Which, which one?
Interfund.
Interfund revenues are a shortfall. So the interfund revenues totaled $2,680,000 for 2019. That's revenues that come into the city from the garbage fund, the water fund, sewer fund, and the, I don't have the other one, I don't have the name of the other one. The reason for the decrease, now, the reason for the budget shortfall is code enforcement reimbursement for CDBG that is all based off of actual costs. So if we don't have enough, you know, if there's, if, we only have two code officers who are working primarily on the CDBG reimbursement, that causes the shortfall in itself. I did have a discussion with Carolyn Scrippsack about that. And we can look into avenues to increase that. But at the end of the day, by impression from that conversation, is that it is a, just the number of staff that we have. State aid, $13 million. That is grants and aid to municipalities. That is dependent upon the number of grants we get annually. We had budgeted the reimbursement for the FRB for, I'm sorry, for the PBA contract from several years ago. That was not, the reimbursement was never processed with New York State. I am working with DOS now to get the reimbursement that will be completed probably in the next month and a half, and will be received in 2020 in full. That grant will be closed out thereafter. The big reason, though, for the decrease from 18 to 19 is we changed how we account for CHIPS revenue for street paving. That is now accounted for entirely out of the capital projects fund. It is merely an accounting function that simplifies the process for the comptroller's office. The last.
Yeah, that was a big hit, a million bucks.
Well, now it's just entirely booked, and the, so that you see a decrease in the revenue, there's also a decrease in the expenses because of that, because we don't, we just account for the entire activity out of the capital fund, as opposed to double booking it in the general fund and the capital fund and having it wash out.
Yep.
Intra-fund, intra-fund revenues. $1.4 million. The difference from budget to actual is, as we currently sit here today, there is no surplus transfer from the water fund to the general fund. You'll see in the recap of the general fund that at this time, it is not merited. It will, we should continue to look at, looking to build the fund balance in the water fund. The increase from 18 to 19 is a transfer from the debt service fund to the general fund. That's composed of two things. Again, over $300,000 from the MAC recordings. There is also, it occurs again in 2020, if we receive premium on our debt issuances, we move that money to the debt service fund and then transfer back to the general fund to offset interest costs of debt payments. That is something that is acceptable and is the encouraged practice from the state comptroller's office. And that is the general fund revenues. And I can move to expenses unless there's any other questions.
I have a question.
Yeah. Council member Zalinski?
Andy, can you explain, I mean, you know, I know in general, the term inter versus intra. You know, inter is between, between funds, and intra should be within a fund. Can you explain, like, when we talk about intra-fund revenues, what's actually happening there and how that's different? The interfund, I think, is just, you know, between the water fund, the sewer fund, and the general fund. But what's the intrafund?
So the big difference between the two is the revenues in intrafund offset operating costs of the general fund. So for example, the water fund pays the general fund $934,000 a year as a reimbursement for staff time. That falls within that category. The surplus transfer, which is acceptable under general municipal law, is not. Directly tied to a correlated expense in the general fund, which is why it goes into that intrafund category. Why it's titled that way? That is a question for the state controller's office.
Okay, fair enough.
Andy?
Yes.
Uh, just that bottom line percent achieved, um. Is that, what is that sixty percent?
That's sixty percent of the act- actual revenues represented sixty percent of the total budget. That's caused by the the not taking the surplus transfer and the appropriated fund balance. I'm going to talk about appropriated fund balance. On the recap page, because it's easier to explain there than it is on this sheet.
Okay. I so, okay, sorry. Because everywhere else in that spreadsheet, the percent achieved is just sort of the. Budget over actual, whereas which would be like ninety five percent achieved.
So it's three point two million dollars short of budget. And the two one, two categories above it represent two point eight million of that. So it's the surplus transfer and then the appropriate of fund balance, which is a.
Right.
Tary revenue. It is not an.
But still, I mean, I think so. I don't I don't know if it's a, I mean, we're at ninety five, the. Actual seventy two thou- million over. Budgeted seventy five million is is like ninety five percent achieved, so.
Uh, yeah, it feels like a calculation mistake.
It's the same formula all the way down.
Uh, maybe double check.
I just ran it through.
The formula on Excel right now.
So seventy two point three oh one divided by seventy five point five eight two comes out to ninety five point six five percent.
Are you maybe taking an average of the percentages maybe, Andy?
I think so. I can.
That's what you're doing rather than.
Oh, that makes sense. Yeah, because it's that last column is is adding the above columns or something.
That's what I think, maybe. I'm taking a guess.
I can look at it and I'll send a corrected number if you'd like. I apologize.
Nope, that's good. Just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
And I was going to ask about the appropriate fund balance. I'll I'll wait till you get to the, I I think, two slides from here.
Yeah, it's a lot easier to explain there.
Okay. Thank you. Is is everyone good to move on to the expenditures? Okay.
All right. General fund expenses. Total expenses were seventy two point three million. The decrease of six hundred sixty one thousand. Ninety five, ninety six percent of the total budget. Permanent salaries. Repairs and rentals. Pension, healthcare, and social security are all significantly impacted by the garbage operations for the city moving to the garbage fund. So the change from nineteen to eighteen in each of those columns. Has an impact of that just simply accounting change. To look at police, the next area I was going to discuss is police overtime. The increase of three hundred eleven thousand dollars or thirty two percent. From eighteen to nineteen was caused entirely by the number of vacancies within the department. Um, if you look back, there's uh quarterly reports on the website that show through the nine months with those vacancies where I do not have the. Number of vacancies with me tonight. I apologize. Um, obviously, I the payroll department runs that and. They are stretched as far as they can right now.
Will that be part of the final document or send it to us separately?
If you'd like it sent separately, I can certainly get that.
Great.
It's also in the council agenda from each month. Um, on the vacancy list.
Sure, could create it, but if you have, if if they're creating it as a aggregate.
Can I just interject? The vacancy list that you received with the regular agenda shows eight vacancies in the police department.
Right.
Thank you, Mara.
But we're talking about sort of a an a time vacant over the course of the year, right? That you could that you're.
Correct. I it means I I can get it. It may take some time just because we have one person in from payroll a day right now.
Yeah, no, no, no rush, just it it would be helpful at some point to see that overall salary savings over the year.
Andy, on the uh fire overtime, do you happen to break it down between the captains and the firefighters? Or is it not broken down that way?
We look at the the way we have it in our office is broken down simply by department.
Okay.
Moving down to equipment, you'll see a. Bump. Of a hundred eighty four thousand. From eighteen to nineteen. Uh, those were all planned equipment purchases throughout various. Departments in twenty nineteen. Mainly in uh, the police department bought vehicles out of their departmental budget. Excuse me. And then there were some other various departments that. Uh, did some equipment or other facility upgrades and improvements uh through budget transfers within their department.
Excuse me.
Andy?
Yes.
Andy, you want to go ahead?
I think we have two folks who uh, council member McPherson, go ahead and then on to council member Cummings.
Thank you.
Um, under the equipment. That has nothing to do, that's just for the police department or is that the fire department as well?
So we have. At this is just out of the general fund, uh, police had equipment purchases. Out of their operating budget, uh, there were some for fire, some for streets, the. The fire department, so there was, there was a point in time during twenty nineteen where we were. We had firehouse improvements budgeted for out of the general fund. At the end of nineteen, what we ended up doing was transferring. All of that accounting to the capital projects fund to maintain a to maintain a long term account. Uh, for that ongoing project. And the reason why we do that is the general fund has a finite fiscal year.
So so Mike, so I guess I'm sorry, I'm going to ask you another thing is. So the the fire department and the police department are combined in that equipment?
No, so. At one point, at one point it was, at the end of, it's not in there anymore because. Moving things to the capital projects fund allows the funding to remain beyond one fiscal year. The life of a project in the capital fund is the light is the length of the fiscal. Accounting records. And nothing closes out until the project's done, whereas if you budget a hundred thousand dollars for firehouse improvements in two thousand nineteen in the general fund. You have the two thousand nineteen to expend that money, then you lose it.
Okay, so so I just want to ask. A few weeks ago, when we were in chambers, uh, an officer came in and handed. The mayor a bill. For anywhere between eight thousand and nine thousand for a dog. Is that in here?
Uh. That I that specific invoice, I don't know where. What account that would have been paid out of, because they have grants also for canines, so it could have been out of another fund as well.
Mayor, do you know what I'm talking about?
I do. I don't know if that came out of the uh twenty budget, though. That wouldn't be reflected in here. We can, we can dig down into it and see if it was grant funded or if it was budgeted.
Okay, please. Thank you. Thank you, Andy.
Councilmember Cummings.
Um, I Ben, I I do see that there's almost a hundred thousand dollars sort of left in that equipment fund. Um. Is that, are any of those still ongoing purchases that are going to end up getting reconciled, or is that likely to be a final number?
Uh, there was thirty, so the numbers you see here are actual payment vouchers out the door. Thirty nine thousand one hundred and seven dollars of the remaining balance is open purchase orders that will be used in twenty twenty. But it's all things that were actually ordered at the end of the year.
So will that end up getting reflected in this or uh in the twenty twenty budget?
It'll be in twenty twenty.
Okay.
We okay to uh go on to contractual services? Um, the only big one I saw here, Andy, was uh. The judicial, the judgments and claims.
Yeah, so judge, so in contractual. Let's see. Judgments and claims, um. That is the settlement of the bro- the. Brothers case for Leonard Hospital. The three hundred seventeen thousand dollar. Settlement that was reached in twenty nineteen by the corporation council's office, which I know Jim is on this call if he wants to touch on. That settlement. Obviously, from a financial position, it was it was. Beneficial to the city.
Yep.
Consultants, uh, unless there's any other question about judges or claims, consultant services, just to note, um. Two point eight million dollars total. Eighty nine, eighty eight and a half percent. Expended for twenty nineteen. An increase of twenty five percent from twenty eighteen. Fifty percent of that increase was from an unforeseen expense related to the Alpha Lanes demolition related to the fire there. Just a couple other material areas um outside legal fees. Third party snow plowing and the city's nine one one contract with the county. That increases that that increased. Twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen was fifty thousand.
When is the nine one one? Um. Uh, that contract expiring, Andy?
Uh. I don't know that off the top of my head. I can look that up.
That's okay. You could let me know if if it's.
I think it's at least another four or five years out.
Thanks, Mayor.
Do you have a countdown clock for that?
Really?
Um, we can terminate on two years' notice and uh, we have had discussions about that, but. Uh, at this point in time, according to the chiefs, there's not a viable alternative.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, a number of municipalities are looking at um larger collaborative arrangements. Uh, but they're not at a point yet where we could give our notice.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, Andy, I apologize, repairs and rentals. Did you hit that one? I know we were up um quite up of a hundred K there. Um.
That was. That was primarily driven by a bill we received. After we finished the audit in the AUD last year that related to two thousand eighteen expenses. Uh, at the landfill, that is a general fund expense. That was a hundred and eighty eight thousand dollars. That is why it went over budget.
Gotcha. Okay. Did anyone else have any questions in this category? Okay, Andy.
Uh, just to touch on debt service, you see a one and a half million dollar increase. From eighteen to nineteen, seven hundred thousand three hundred ninety that. Seven hundred thousand three hundred ninety dollars of that one and a half million is directly related related to the MAC debt. There was also an increase in. Uh, bond anticipation, no interest expense related to the seawall project. Some of that, as I mentioned before, was offset with revenues or transfers from the debt service fund. We did that again in twenty nineteen. There will be legislation throughout twenty twenty to do it again. All. All all bond anticipation notes sit in their own bank account. Every one of them earns interest. We use that interest to offset future interest costs. We will probably do a sweep of that again. In August or September. And then again in December, ideally. Moving on to code eight benefits. Pension is over budget, a hundred eighty two thousand dollars. That is directly related to. Police PFRS, which is Police and Fire's Retirement System. Uh, when we prepare the budget, we receive estimates and projections from the state controller's office. Then when they send the actual bill, there was an adjustment to the city's share of the contribution. That increased that drove up the cost of the city. That is the entire reason for that. Healthcare. Down one point one million. From twenty eighteen and eighty seven percent or one point seven million dollar budgetary savings. That is caused entirely by usage on the Blue Shield Plan. We budget based off of the actual first, the budget is done by the city's third party administrator. We have, we don't touch that budget at all. We we certainly ask a lot of questions, but it comes from, as it currently stands, Benetec. They look at the last eighteen months of claims and annualize it down to twelve months. The the city in twenty eighteen, obviously by the number. Uh, there were significant claims incurred in that year. It's all based off of usage.
Hey, Andy, um, obviously, I I know you were on track to uh go out with. A new RFP. Do you intend, um, obvi- this all happened before this health crisis. Do you intend to go out with? An RFP with Benetec, I think they expired or are about to expire. Do you plan maybe in the next couple of months?
Yeah, so they their contract expires December thirty first with no more renewals, so so we have to go out for RFP. Obviously, like you said, the timeline on this now probably changes, would has changed. I think the 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 kind of the path I foresee is. Working on that RFP um towards these to really getting into it the the end of this month, once we kind of can pivot out of the AUD. Uh, once the once entering really takes full. Full stage, uh, the the so that I can kind of pivot out of the AUD to some extent and move and turn our focus on to that RFP. That is next on the hit list of big projects to complete.
Okay.
Um, are there any other questions related to expenditures? Okay, so if you go to the next page. This is a recap of the general fund. I, this is presented in the manner. Of how the audit will look. Uh, when that comes out. Late summer, early fall. That is the easiest and and the AUD follows it, the AUD just doesn't lay it out in such a easy to follow manner. But the that the um audit does. So the total operating surplus in the general fund for twenty nineteen, as we currently sit here today, is seven hundred fifty one thousand dollars. That's looking at total revenues. Less intrafund revenues. And total expenses less interfund transfers. The next, you add operating transfers in of one point four million that we previously discussed, primarily made up of transfers in the debt service fund. Related to offsetting city debt costs in Detroit MAC. And operating transfers out of two point two million. Which were transfers to the capital fund, the garbage fund for services rendered by the. Garbage fund that the general fund is responsible for, such as municipal municipal pickup, municipal pickup like city facilities. The parks, street cans, things of that nature. And you end up with a total surplus, as we currently see here today, of eight eight thousand eight hundred ninety nine dollars. And then you get to the add back reserve appropriation. The easiest way to think of this is you transferring money from your personal savings account to your personal checking account to use for ongoing, for, not, to use for any various expense. In 2019, we appropriated from three of the city's five reserve accounts. We, we transferred money from the snow and ice reserve, which is, which was used for the significant snowstorm. At some, I, I don't, I can't recall when that was in 19, but for that storm, we transferred $110,000 from the workers' comp reserve to settle a multiple workers' comp case with a, with a city employee. And we transferred a material amount of over 700,000 from the capital reserve for the Mount Ida Dam project and the paving work done on Sage Avenue. As I said before, you see on the revenue page that there's no actual revenue recorded. You don't recognize revenue because you're just simply transferring it from one account to the other. It's recognized as a budgetary revenue, simply to ensure that your budget of revenue and expenditures match each other. But what you do do is, so the city has an unassigned fund balance, which is the number that everyone looks at as where does the general fund sit at a financial position. That's what credit agencies look at, that's what the State Comptroller's Office looks at. That's what the auditors look at. We will be adding $864,000 to the city's unassigned fund balance prior to the allocation of general fund balance. There is a formula that's been passed by the city council in 1996, which has been amended twice in the last two and a half years that defines how the city allocates money to various reserves. I will say that, looking at the results in 2019, all of these are a very good thing, especially given the number of unforeseen expenditures that occurred in 2019. For example, Sage Avenue or Alpha Lanes demolition, Mount Ida Dam, when you take all that into, into consideration, the results of the general fund are very good. I know that was a lot of information. If anyone has any questions about what's on this page, I'd be more than glad to answer them.
Council President.
Yep, Council Member McPherson.
Andy, you just said the demolition charge for the Alpha Lanes up here. Isn't the owner responsible to get paid, we're getting paid back on that?
Yes, that is something that the Corporation Counsel's Office is working with, working through currently.
So can I ask, how much did it cost, would it cost us to, to demo? We're going to anticipate getting that back?
Yes, it's, it, there was 199,000 and it is, there's a revenue receivable on our books for the end of the year.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Council Member. And you know what, Andy, this, this page did kind of throw me off at first because I know in prior years, you would kind of lump all the revenues and lump the expenditures and then have the surplus, like in 2018. So is, is there a reason, Andy, that it's done different? Is it because of the garbage fund, I take it?
No, it's done, I did it this way because I want, for two reasons. One, I wanted to mirror it to the audit.
Okay.
Because you're going to see in the audit a form that looks similar to this, it's on the operating statement. The other reason is, is we've never, in my tenure as deputy comptroller, appropriated from reserves before. And I spoke with Bonadillo this week as to what's their best recommendation to demonstrate what that looks like. Simply because I, I have never put something forward to the council that, that has that included for the general fund.
Okay.
And I think it's important as well for the council to see what the operations of a fund resulted in, and then the other items. Again, like, not to keep, like the audit does, but I think it's a good portrayal of operations of the city at, at the level of the four funds.
Now, Andy
Council President.
Yep, go ahead, Council Member Cummings.
Um, yeah, so this, at the end of the day, the Mount Ida Dam and paving, the actual money spent, do we know, first of all, was roughly that 800,000 or between those, it was more like 700,000, I think you said? Was that spent and is that reflected in that total expenses number or is that in a separate place?
So Sage Avenues and total expenses, Mount Ida Dam is in operating transfers out because we established a capital project
Because it's a capital
for Mount Ida Dam.
Okay, great. And then, so then at the end of the day, do these, are these 864, 762, is that staying in a, on a signed fund or is that getting divvied up into the reserve funds?
It looks like it will be, some will go in unassigned and some will go into the reserves.
Replenish that snow
What that dollar amount is, I'll know on about April 28th because it's the last thing I do for the AUD.
Okay. How much is needing to be replenished in the snow emergency fund?
80,000.
Okay.
That's definitely going back.
Yeah.
Would it help maybe to break out the transfers out and transfers in for everyone? Or would that be a pain in the butt, Andy?
As to where the money went to?
Yeah, like breaking it out.
I can get that over to, so I'll tell you, the operating transfers in was entirely debt service. 368,000 was related to the MAC. The balance, which should be 1,098,000, was for debt payments. You gotta remember, we, we leveled the MAC debt payment.
Right.
That 700,000 of that was specifically for the MAC, 398,000 was for other debt costs because we did so well on premium in 2019. We did very well in January on premium. I don't know how long that's going to last for, given the market situation right now. For expenses, the 2.2, 1.556 million went to the capital fund. 37,500 was for unemployment insurance. Just to note, that account has been wrong, wrongly classified until 2020. We did correct that. It's rather 2020 budget. 614,775 went to the garbage fund.
Are you seeing any movement at this point? Are, I don't know if you're asking right now on, on bond numbers. Have we gotten a quote or seen people that get quotes since this all started?
I, I know of one issuance, it was not very pretty for them. But I think it depends on who you talk to. If you, and I'm not discounting what one person says to the other. But if you talk to Pioneer, it, it's still fairly reasonable. I've talked to fiscal advisors and it was a lot, not as pretty. The timing of that conversation was different too. The, the conversation was just with fiscal advisors was about two days after the, the rates were cut down to zero. The conversations with Pioneer are, every time I talk to Pioneer, I just kind of casually ask what the rates that they're seeing are.
Okay.
Council President.
Yes, before you go, I, I believe Council Member Ash McPherson might have tried to chime in at the same time that Council Member Cummings, or are you okay, Council Member Ash?
No, I have a question and I might have missed it and I apologize if I did, Andy. You had said on the expenditures, where is the, the garbage expenditures in there and the general fund?
They're, they're not in the general fund, they're in the garbage fund.
They're in the garbage fund and we didn't, okay, thank you, I'll wait.
Yep, Council Member Zaluski.
Andy, my question is another terminology question. So the, the operating transfers in seem to be, you know, on the revenues, that's the intra-fund revenues, the 1466087. The operating transfers out are actually on the inter-fund transfer under the expenses, the 2208741. So I'm just trying to understand the difference in terminology. We have transfers in, we're calling them intra-fund. We have transfers out and we're calling them inter-fund.
That, that's from the State Comptroller's Office and I, there's a lot of things that they say that, or they recommend, not to sound sarcastic. They say, the, the way they classify things is sometimes is beyond my understanding. But it's just how they define everything.
Okay, fair enough. So it's not, it's not our own terminology, that's the Comptroller's Office terminology.
Correct.
Is that what they call GASP?
No, that's a whole nother area that we go through.
Okay. Um, is everyone okay? We'll move along or any other questions? Okay. You know what, Andy, it's, it's, I mean, I like what you did, but it was so much less complicated when you put revenues and expenditures. But I'm, I'm grateful, I'm grateful.
Yes, it's, it is complicated. Garbage fund revenues. Total revenues are 4.472 million. Obviously, there's no comparison because it's the first year. 147,000 over budget. Where that came from, I will get to in the second area. Primarily, departmental income, that is, so the, the garbage fund, the water fund and the sewer fund all recognize revenues as they are billed. And that's a very important note, especially for the garbage fund, which I will get to at the recap. Departmental income is derived from garbage fees, which is the per-unit cost, bulk fees and violations. That total was $11,000 under than what we anticipated, 99.69%. That was caused by adjustments being less than, more than what we've anticipated. When we budget the garbage, when, when looking at the adjustments, when we do the budget process, we use the prior year's adjustment numbers because they're obviously the most real-time numbers that we have. Use of money in property is entirely the interest and penalties charged on delinquent bills related to this fund. So we, we charged $119,000 for late payment fees related to garbage bills, fees and violations. State aid, those are all grants that Renee Panetta submits for. Those are all anticipated on being reimbursed. And inter-fund transfers is the payment from the general fund to the garbage fund for services rendered. Are there any other questions about garbage fund revenues? I'm going to discuss, if people are going to ask about collection rates, especially the garbage fee as part of the recap.
Council President.
Yep, Council Member Ash McPherson.
Andy, you said you don't have any 2018 numbers.
Not in there, not in the, they're not in the general fund. What's that?
You have nothing to compare these numbers to, you said. Where's the 2018 numbers?
So when, when it was in the general fund, all the, the expenditures were simply 88160, the cost of collecting garbage. When you create a new fund, just like the water and the sewer fund, there are new costs associated that never existed before because they're all paid within the garbage fund and were never split out. For example, the garbage fund pays a piece of the insurance cost that the city pays for. And they pay a percentage of third party. We do not have that split out because it was all in the general fund prior to January 1st, 2019.
So in 2018, what was the revenue that the city received from the garbage? You can't, you don't have those
It's in home and community services.
Right. So if you look at 18, hold on, I, I have that somewhere. Uh, it was 2.4 mil or 2.8, does that sound right? 2.8?
2.4 million, it's right here.
Okay, 2.4.
You got 2.4 in 2018 and in 2019 you got 4.4?
Correct.
Revenue.
And revenue, correct.
And really, that's 3.4. Where did I get 3.4? Did we budget for 3.4? I wrote down 3.4 for some reason, Andy. Why would I write that down?
2.4, that's billed on when received, right? That's, that's what we actually received.
When the revenue was in the general fund, it was recognized as it was, as it was paid because that's the rules of accounting. When it goes to the garbage fund, it's as it's billed.
Yep.
So in 2019, our revenue in the garbage fund was 44.4 million?
It was 4.4 million, yes.
Okay, that's into, okay, thank you.
That, that includes bulk also, does it, Andy and the other
So, so there are revenues that were, that the bulk is the big one, that was a new one, that, that bulk, the bulk fee generated 287,000 billed in 2019.
It was billed in 2019 and re, or billed in 2018 and received in 19?
No, we billed $287,000 for bulk pickup in 2019.
2019.
And it doesn't have to be received because it's now the garbage fund?
Correct.
And then the, the inter-fund transfers, that's the leftover from 20, that's the rebuild from 2018?
No, that is, that is the payment from general to garbage for services rendered. That re, the, the collection number, the collection number is in the garbage bill revenue. So that, so the 3.5 is made up of, for the three, so of the 3.5 million, 3.2 is directly rated, related to the per-unit garbage fee. That is broken into two, two categories from there. I don't have these numbers because we use one account. It is the 2019 billings on the 2019 fee. And it is the 2019 collections of unpaid 2018 fees.
Wait, what?
So there's no expectation that this number remains this high ongoing?
Well, it, the, the per-unit fee, the 180 dollars per unit is, is calculated in the same way that we calculate the tax rate. We get the departmental expenditures. We, we, we budget the revenues off of, you know, for, for grants, it's based off of the budgeted, budgeted expenditures for things like bulk pickup or fair share billing for 2021's budget will all be based off of trends and what we're seeing being billed. You have a difference of expenditures there and that is the, the per-unit cost.
Andy?
Yes.
Did, you may have said this previously and I don't remember it. How many units do you know that we have? How many? I, I know that's houses, apartments. Did you ever come up with a number on that or if, you don't have to do it right now or give me that number?
I have it right here for 2020's budget. We, for the 2020's budget, we estimated that there were 17,108 units to be billed for the 2020 garbage fee.
Okay. And we don't know if they're all accurate because some of those units might not, they might be not being used where a person doesn't have to pay for two units because they're only living in one?
No, I account for that.
You did. So these are, this is 17,000 actual units that you're anticipating 180 per unit out of?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Hey Andy?
Yeah.
Before we move on to water, did anyone else have questions on the garbage fund?
I do want to touch on garbage fund expenses and recap the fund for the year.
Oh, good. All right. Yep, go first. Oh, good. All right. Yep, go for it.
So garbage fund expenses. Total three point eight five million dollars for twenty nineteen, eighty-nine percent of the budget. There's, unless if there's questions, there's just one note I wanted to touch on. That is tipping fees. Tipping fees ended up coming in under budget. By a hundred and six thousand dollars. That was budgeted off of historical numbers. Prior, you know, twenty eighteen, twenty seventeen, twenty sixteen. And it was under budget. Um, you kind of can see and hear, just to, Councilmember McPherson, to touch on your questions from before about this, the new. Fund and new expenses. The split out wouldn't have had a contingency, when it was in the general fund, it would not have had a contingency. It would not have had due to other funds. It would not have had debt service and we did not allocate workers comp. By department in two thousand eighteen. There's other individual line items within this sheet, but those. Four categories alone were not split out during, because it was previously in the general fund.
Council President.
Okay. Councilmember Cummings.
Uh, just wanted to be clear on the tipping fees number. Um, there, that, there wasn't a change in the rate. That's a change in the, that total tonnage we dropped off.
I, to the rate, I'm not entirely sure if the rate changed. My understanding is that it is primarily driven by the number of, by the tonnage that was sent from the city to the transfer station.
Great.
So maybe people are recycling more.
Yep, that was going to be my question as well.
Let's hope. You would think maybe Renee would have some figures maybe on that.
They do. I just haven't seen her.
Okay.
During this time.
We can.
That would be like. It would be the equivalent of. One thousand seven hundred tons less garbage. Than previous years.
So. Councilmember McPherson.
Sorry, Andy. What's the, what's the overtime in there? You had budgeted overtime for two thousand nineteen was. Eighty-two, if I'm reading that right, and it came in at sixty-six. What's the overtime in the garbage? Consists of?
Primarily collections on. Holidays.
And what's the miscellaneous other?
That is made up of primarily longevity and comp buyouts. So overtime is under budget, miscellaneous other is over budget. Dr, primarily driven by the. Comp buyouts. Which was over. Uh, twenty eighth, that number, a little more than that, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and then they were under in other areas. So a C S A, these are all C S A employees. C S A employees are allowed to elect to take comp time or overtime. If they take comp time. It's essentially, they, it's still time and a half or on a Saturday, double time. Sunday. Or holidays, the triple time. Um, if it's not used on December thirty-first, it gets paid out in the subsequent year and we book it back. They are not allowed to care. Per their contract, they are not allowed to carry over comp time year to year. So overtime's under. Miscellaneous others over, it's, it's, it, those two can go together. And they did end up going over on overtime. It's really. The C S A settled the contract in twenty nineteen that, that increased wages mid-year. That is a, that is a contributing factor to it. Um.
And, and.
It's an area that we're going to look at more from an actual standpoint with the Commissioner General Services. But it's also a budgetary number that needs to be looked at going out into the future years.
And, and what is the temporary salaries? What were they based on?
Uh, there was a temporary employee. In. Um. There is a, there was a temporary employee that was responsible for billing, uh, bulk fees during twenty nineteen. That is now a full-time employee.
And with that, that's, that would be under the permanent salary. So it was partly temporary and then went into the permanent, right?
It was, the, that position was entirely temporary for nineteen and is full-time now in twenty.
In twenty, okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, Andy, who is, uh, the consultant services? Do you know? For what?
That is. That is mainly the hazardous, the, the company that comes in for household hazardous waste day.
Really? It costs fifty something K for that? Really?
That, that costs forty-seven thousand, five hundred fifty-six dollars.
Why do I think?
That's primarily what it's made up of. But we did two, we did two days of it last year, if I remember correctly.
I thought we got a grant for that.
We do, and that's in the state aid number.
Okay. So do we reimburse this or no?
We'll be reimbursed for it. The reimbursement was already submitted by Renee.
Okay.
It's a fifty, it's a fifty percent reimbursable grant.
Fifty percent, okay.
And that reimbursed, oh, sorry, sorry.
That's okay.
That reimbursement goes back into the garbage fund, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
The garbage fund is just like the water and the sewer fund. We, we separate that out entirely.
And Andy, in twenty eighteen, so our revenues were seventy-four point six and seventy-two point seven expenditures. I would think we'll come close to that if we weaved in the garbage fund. Am I correct?
The.
So looking back at.
And that's a tough question to answer be, because of the new expenses. We would have to, you know, for example, that, the, the six hundred fourteen. Thousand dollars in revenue from generally garbage. Um, due to other funds, five thirty-eight. For this line right here in particular, it wouldn't exist. So it's, it's not. A direct apples to apples, year to year, because you'd have to back out nineteen numbers to see what it would have been in the general fund.
Okay.
And, and so like insure, and, no, that one. Consultant services, the, due to other funds. So some of them would have changed just because of the split. And the expenses.
Okay. Anything else on the garbage fund? All right.
All right. So the recap of the garbage fund, which has good news and as I will call it, very cautious news. Obviously, I kept the format very similar to the general fund for this. The total surplus in the garbage fund for twenty nineteen was six hundred, just under six hundred sixteen thousand dollars. Which is good because it's the first year of the fund. It develops a fund balance. To be used for unforeseen or capital expenses that are needed, one-time expenses going out into the future. Now, there is some cautious news regarding this. For those returning council members, you know, I've said this all of nineteen. I would, I, I don't, not that I don't care about the surplus, but I am much more interested. In what the balance sheet looks like of the garbage fund in relation to what a surplus is. And what I mean by that is, what are the accounts receivable related to the surplus? So some analytics of what. Accounts receivable are, and this is specific to just the two thousand nineteen garbage fee and what's outstanding on December thirty-first. Which amounts to five hundred fifteen thousand dollars. Seventeen point nine three percent of garbage bills that were sent out were unpaid as of December thirty-first. That equals five hundred fifteen thousand. Equals eighty-three point seven percent of the surplus. Are unpaid bills. And unpaid bills. Get re-lebbed on the twenty twenty property taxes and the general fund makes the garbage fund whole and assumes collection of the fees. Forty-five percent of the assets of the garbage fund are unpaid garbage bills. Now, when you re-levy the garbage fees, just like vacant building fees, just like water bills, they go entirely on the first installment. As of yesterday, we've only collected three hundred thirty thousand dollars of the five hundred fifteen thousand. So as we sit here today, the general fund has paid almost two hundred thousand dollars to the garbage fund for fees that have not been paid to the city. Collections have to improve on this fee. And, and our office, obviously, it's a delicate situation as we currently sit here today. In nineteen, we sent out delinquent letters almost every single month that had this fee on it. I don't know what else, you know, I, from a comptroller's office perspective. We're doing as best as we can to get the fees collected, but I think it's important for the council to be aware that, yes, there's a surplus. Just like any other fund, but especially here, it is not in cash. It is entirely in receivables.
Andy?
Yeah, I mean, it's. Paper, it's, it's not cash flow at all.
And we've found three hundred thirty of it back, but there's still almost two hundred thousand. Sitting there that, that needs to be paid.
Right. Councilmember Cummings.
Uh, do you have a total number on what's outstanding from the twenty eighteen re-levies?
Uh, not with me, but it's not very much, if I remember correctly.
So over the course of an average year. We're seeing most of it come in, but it is delayed by. Six months plus. It sounds like.
I'd have to look at what nineteen's currently outstanding is. Um. I do, without having the percentages in front of me, the collection rate on water bills is much better than the collection rate on garbage bills.
Sure.
People don't want their water turned off.
Right.
It doesn't want their trash turned off either. We're not going to do that.
Yeah, it's. Top one.
Um. I mean, is, is your sense that this is largely a cash flow? Challenge for the general fund. And not a long-term structural. Problem with the, with the, with the garbage fund itself.
Well, the garbage fund is always going to be made whole, just like the water funds made whole, just like the sewer funds made whole.
Sure, but if it ends up driving a significant long-term deficit.
It's an issue for the general fund long-term. If, if the collection rate doesn't increase and we rely on.
Right.
Re-levy collection and then unpaid. Items on re-levy and it is a cash flow issue. I mean, you're, we're saying that five hundred, you know, five hundred fifteen. No, five, what is it? Five hundred fifteen thousand. Or eighty-three percent of, the eighty-four percent of the surplus was on paper.
Right.
Yep.
And it's a bad time of year for crunch.
Right now.
Yeah. But that's down to about a hundred and eighty-five thousand now outstanding, you said?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
And then, let's see. Just as we look towards the twenty twenty-one budget, um. Do you have it in front of you? How much was from the re-levy or not?
The re, the re-levy recognition was a one-time, one-year-only thing.
Right, but do you have a number on how much that was?
For twenty twenty's budget?
Uh, no, for twenty nineteen.
For twenty nineteen.
I don't have that with me. That's already, it's part of twenty twenty's budget. Uh, that's a word, that was the reason for the fee increase.
Right. Okay, well, thank you. That's enough for now.
Any other questions on the garbage?
Blessings.
Thank you. You know what? This screen is horrible because I am noticing how much I touched my face. Okay.
Water fund, and I promise we're almost done. These next two will be quicker.
We're good, we're good. Hey, um, Andy, do you want to hit it? Are we transferring the two point two or?
As we currently sit here today, no.
Okay.
I do not foresee any, we're, I don't see any way that we are transferring, transferring the full two point two. Um, if we transfer any, it's, it's. I gotta get, gotta finish all the reconciliations before that's definitively known.
Okay, understood.
Water fund revenues are twelve point four million, an increase of a hundred ninety-five thousand or one point six percent from eighteen. Seventy-two point six six percent of the budget was recognized. There's appropriated fund balance of three point seven eight million. It's the same. Idea of the general fund. We will discuss that on the recap sheet. City water sales. Were down a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from two thousand eighteen. And eighty-nine point eight six percent of the budget was achieved. This ties to sewer revenues because the city sewer rate is a hundred percent of the city water rate. You will see an almost identical result in sewer revenues. The decrease is based entirely on consumption by city residents. There, there is no other, we have, I've reviewed it. By district, water, water billing district by water billing district. Wayland, the, the, it is purely consumption. The shortfall of the budgetary revenues is consistent with what we've seen the last few years. Outside community sales.
But do you want to just stay on that for a second, Andy? So really, it's, it's totally on consumption there. There's not different meter readings or I know people, um, have replacements a while ago. I mean, my bills. Certainly have been going down. Um, and I know there's a lot of people says fights last year. Um, but.
It was, it was entirely consumption. Um. And looking at it, there, so we have fifteen, thirteen, no, fourteen districts. Nine. One, two, three, four, five, six, nine of them decreased in twenty nineteen from twenty eighteen. And adjustments were almost, and adjustments actually went down minimally from eighteen to nineteen. So it's, 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 it's all consumption.
Wow. Okay.
Outside community sales increased two hundred eighty-nine thousand from two thousand nineteen. However, there was a shortfall in revenue to the budget ninety-two percent. That. Based on, we had anticipated, there was a shortfall in revenue from Waterford and Half Moon that. Made up a significant portion of this, a material portion. Um, they drew from other sources more than we anticipated.
If you recall, I had asked if that was going to have an impact and. Um. Chris didn't think that it would have an impact and. I mean, I had a tough time not believing it would, uh, not have an impact. So, um, you know, I mean, that's. A chunk of change. Do we know how much, uh, Waterford and Half Moon are responsible for that huge shortfall?
I do. I'm pointing, you keep seeing my head ducked so I can see my other screen.
Okay, I thought you were just trying to show us your logo on your shirt.
Three hundred seventy-three thousand.
That much of a shortfall? Wow.
It's a double, nowadays, I mean, it's a tough, that's a tough line to, to. To have a clear opinion on for me because it did go up, but the budget it was down on. So it's like, it's middle in a sense.
Can I make, uh, that clarifying point? It's not that consumption went down. It's that consumption didn't go up to the same degree that it was budgeted. The budgeting was too aggressive. Is that correct, Andy?
Yeah, so it's, that's a better way to put it than. No, I did. It's a fair point.
Why, why would we have, uh, budgeted for seven point seven? Do you recall? I'm trying to think back.
Uh, I could, that's a conversation I can have with Chris Wayland.
Yeah. I'm, I'm trying to recall that. I have notes. I can look them up, but. Um. Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to recall that. I have notes, I can look them up, but, um, yeah, I mean, especially considering I, I know that that had gone down last year also, I believe, right, Mayor?
I believe it did. I, uh, but again, I don't think the usage went down. I think that, uh, once again, the budgeting was overly optimistic. We can talk to Chris about that. I know he runs his own trend lines, but we're gonna certainly pay closer attention to his work in twenty twenty-one. Um, and he may be looking at development that's occurring in Half Moon and, uh, projecting increases as a result of that. Um, but this'll get a little closer scrutiny, uh, this summer when we do the budgeting.
Okay, and, you know, we also had talked about maybe getting the other communities to chip in for the C S O. If you could also, I'm not sure if he's made any halfway on that either. Maybe, uh, you could look into that for us, that'd be great.
On the water main you're talking?
We, we've, we've been in conversations with the outside communities pertaining to the water main project.
Or the water main, I'm so sorry, yep.
We, we are working on that.
So I have twenty eighteen, um, let's see, outside communities were, well, you know what? We, we actually said seven point five, it came in at six point eight, so we were seven hundred and eighty K short in twenty eighteen, um.
It, it is a, but it's a budget. It, it's, it's, both of these follow a trend where they both come in under budget, and there's still a surplus in the fund.
No, I understand. Just, um, yeah, I mean, it's something we probably gotta watch. Thank you.
I don't know if there's any other questions specific to water revenues. Appropriate fund balance is used to fund the annual water fund capital plan. Just to note that, um, if not, I can go to expenditures.
Okay, uh, Andy, if you don't mind, the appropriate fund balance, could you repeat what you just said? I'm so sorry.
It's used to fund the annual water fund capital plan.
Okay, okay.
Which, this year, that wasn't the Tomahannock yet, or it includes a little bit of that?
Uh, the Tomahannock is on the bond resolution for it, the forty million dollar bond resolution. It's the purchase of.
We didn't appropriate anything for that at this point, right?
No.
So this is all the smaller waterline projects throughout the city?
Uh, it's everything that's outlined, it's, uh, specifics, uh, it's in the back of the budget.
Sure.
And council member Cummings, you have two screens.
Yeah, sorry, I have a shaky connection, but apparently the audio is better on this one and the video is better on that one.
Okay. Is everyone good with the water fund revenue questions? Anything on the expenditures, Andy?
Um, total expenditures of thirteen point nine million, an increase of sixteen point seven four percent from twenty eighteen. And the, two point two of that is the funding of the D P U capital plan. Eighty-one percent of the budget was expended, two point two of that is the, is the surplus transfer from water to general. Overall, in looking at the expenditures, unless if anyone has any particular questions, a lot of the change you see, permanent salaries, vacancies, materials and supplies was a one-time expense that occurred in twenty eighteen. Um, there was nothing too specific materially materially that's, that jumped out to myself. Debt, debt, the increases from that is the city converted, uh, long, to long-term debt. The financing costs of the water main project in Lansingburg and the increase of that is the debt payment associated with that project.
Okay. Did anyone else have any questions on that? I think we're good, Andy. Just looking, uh, that service, did you answer that? It looked like from twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen, it spiked.
That we converted to long-term debt, the Lansingburg Water Main Project.
Okay, sorry, I missed that, yep.
The first payment was that.
Okay, sorry.
Oh, you're fine.
Anyone else? All right.
So, the recap of the water fund, and again, it's in this format that will mirror that of the audit. Ascend, to boil this down simply, the transfer to the capital fund for the capital plan gets offset by the fund balance appropriation. And the total surplus in the water fund on operations and the change to fund balance is two point two nine four million dollars for twenty nineteen. I think it's beneficial for Chris to continue to build a fund balance to, for future, you know, projects. Uh, there's a, as everyone knows, there's a debt load coming for the water fund. The Lansingburg project, the Tomahannock project, building a fund balance will allow funding resources, um, for other infrastructure projects that will be need to be done or are currently ongoing, and any emergency work that that occurs, that's of a material amount.
Do you have a total on that fund right now? Where does it stand?
No. Do not have that with me. I can get that. That'll be, I can send that once the A U D's done.
Sure.
Okay. Well, so, Andy, the surplus, or the deficit, I'm sorry, that's showing on this, that is paper only.
That's paper only, because it's offset by the fund balance appropriation.
Okay. Got it. Any other questions? Okay.
Sewer total revenues were four point three nine million. A decrease of four point two-two percent from eighteen. Eighty-nine percent of the budget was recognized. It caused entirely by consumption to city residents.
Any questions? Okay.
Moving on to expenses. Total was four point, as it currently stands today, four point three nine million, a decrease of three point five seven percent. Eighty-eight point eight seven percent of the budget expended. Uh, just the one note on here, equipment. Uh, that's cost related to Sage Avenue to fix the sewer main that blew out from the storm. I know you, workers' comp, that, that's just pay, that, not just, but that is, uh, payments of awards given throughout the fiscal year, and then was against the trend that what we have seen historically.
Council president?
Yep, council member, I should make sure you're sent.
Andy, can you give me any information, or us any information as to why the overtime increased, uh, almost twenty thousand, twenty-five?
Uh, no, I can certainly check with Chris on that.
It does look like permanent salaries had a significant savings. Perhaps they were short-staffed.
There were multiple vacancies, uh, throughout nineteen in that, in, in that department in sewer.
Yeah, I think Chris had said he was really having a tough time filling some, um, positions. And I know that, uh, I believe Nate Panisi, one of the operators, might have left like early in the year. But I think he was having a tough time.
Andy, could you let me know what that, find out what that is and let me know, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Do you have any past experience about whether vacancies in this department drive overtime or whether it's more like projects?
That I'm not entirely sure.
And Andy, maybe just wanna keep an eye on the workers' comp.
We, yeah, we, yes, we do.
Uh, council president?
Yep, uh, council member Zeliski.
Yeah, my guess is that, uh, the overtime is driven mostly by, uh, emergencies such as the one that happened, uh, if it was last night or the night before on Third and Ida, uh, where, you know, when you've got a water leak, whether it's a huge water main break or just something small that might be flooding a single property, they're gonna send their workers out and they're gonna fix it right then and there, no matter, you know, what the timing is. So last night, I, I know we generated overtime from seven P M until about twelve thirty A M. Uh, that's probably a good portion of the overtime. It's just because these things have to be fixed.
Correct, I get that. I just would like to know what it is.
Yeah, I think, uh, Ken, that would be covered in the water fund. The sewer fund overtime probably was driven up by the events on Sage Avenue in August. I'm gonna say, I'm gonna guess that that took a bite out of it.
Thank you, that, thank you. That, that would have explained, thank you, Mayor. But I'd still like to know, thanks.
The good news is, I think, the overall change there is that, uh, we have, we had salary savings overall, right? Andy?
Correct.
Yep.
Any other question, any other questions here?
I think we're pretty good. Um, anyone else have questions?
Do we know, do we know what drove the consultant services chain, uh, savings as well?
Wow.
There was a one-time event in two thousand eighteen, is what I have in my notes.
But we budgeted for it in twenty nineteen anyway?
Believe so. I, that's something I could check with Chris on.
Okay, thank you.
Good questions. Anything else, uh, Andy? And I was looking at, uh, the consultant services from, uh, twenty eighteen, and, um, looks like they, uh, they were under budget in twenty eighteen.
I can sell, I'll, I can check into that.
Okay.
Sewer fund results. Those, it's a break even, and the reason for that is that there's a fund balance policy for the sewer fund related to the C S O project, where we transfer the lesser of the budgetary amount for the C S O project or the actual surplus or deficit. If you look, it's the budgeted amount, as you can see right here, was one point seven three nine million adjusted. This, the, the, the point of this whole policy is to make it so that the fund balance policy, the fund balance of the sewer fund does not get depleted to fund the C S O project. It's to essentially protect it. Um, because it's, it's not at a good, not in a very good position. It's, it's comfortable as it currently stands, but the exact balances I don't have with me. Uh, but it was just to, to protect the long-term financial position of the sewer fund. Which is, is why we passed, uh, presented that and had it passed in two thousand eighteen.
All right, did you say which fund it transfers into?
Capital projects fund for the C S O project. I don't, are there any other questions?
We're good. Uh, anyone else have any questions? Andy, you know, obviously, um, the reports just continue to get, um, more detailed and, um, much more user-friendly for at least myself. And I just wanna thank you. I know how much work goes into this and, um, I just wanna thank you very, very much for the detail and the breakdown and, um, the work put into this with you and your team.
Thank you.
Andy?
Yeah.
Andy, I just wanna say thank you myself, because, you know, like, the last four years ago, you were very informative and very good explaining everything, and you just get better by the years, but thank you very much. You age like a nice glass of wine.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
More praise for Andy, more praise.
All right.
Sorry, my job, thank you.
It's all good, it's all good. Um, if okay, uh, it's seven forty-eight. Um, Andy, if you wanna, uh, conk out and we can go into the regular meeting, if everyone's good with that. And, um, once again, thank you, Andy, and, um, I'm, I'm sure, Ken, you can attest to, you know, maybe the uh, prior administration. I mean, we loved, uh, the comptroller, but so much of it was in his head. And, uh, Andy's done a great job putting that on paper.
Yep, I agree a hundred percent.
All right, bye, Andy.
Thank you. Bye, Andy. You can't see me waving, but I'm waving.
Have a good night, thank you.
Okay. All right, uh, we'll roll into if Mara's, uh, all said, are we good to?
Can I have a motion to adjourn on the finance meeting?
I'm so sorry.
Could you ask for a motion, please?
Yes, I will. Yep, I'm so sorry. See, this virtual thing. Uh, do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion, council member Zeliski, do you have a second?
Second.
Second.
Uh, second, I think it was council member Steele, all in favor of adjourning finance? Uh, those? Okay, uh, Mara, we're okay now to go into the regular meeting?
Yep, sounds good.
Okay, um, what I'd like to do, uh, is, um, we'll open up the meeting, uh, regular meeting, April second, it's seven fifty. I would ask everyone to stand for the pledge of allegiance, and Jim, do you have your flag?
I do, but you can't see me anymore. We'll use, we'll use Sue's red, white, and blue scarf.
There we go. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
United States of America.
And to the republic. One nation, and the God.
I don't know if that multi-mic thing works, but it sounded good to me.
I know, the multi-mic is no good. Uh, Mara, you wanna take a roll?
Council member Belly?
I am here.
Council member Ash McPherson?
Present.
Council member Steele?
Here.
Council member Cummings? Did he say present? All right, council member.
I am here, but it looks like we had our first technical glitch with council member Cummings.
Uh, council member McDermott? Council member McDermott?
I'm here.
And council president Mantala?
I am here, and now.
Now I know why we put council member Zeliski in charge of I T, or technology committee.
Hey, council president?
Yes, sir.
Did I miss something? I, I, I don't remember, I don't remember any vote on resolution thirty-nine. Are we saving that? Weren't we supposed to do finance and bring it to?
No, it's fine, because these are for introduction only, and honestly, we could have just used the email, but I figure we're here, we might as well technically amend the resolution. And we can do it here at the regular meeting, because technically, we're not voting on them. And we could just put a new notice out, but we might as well, since we're here.
Good, let's go. Let's get it done.
All right, uh, there's no local laws. Um, there is an ordinance, um, and that is the C D B G. We are not voting on this. Um, this is the, uh, C D B G five-year plan and the, uh, one-year action plan. Uh, this is for introduction only. And it will open it up now to thirty-day public comment period, which I did mention earlier. Um, I did want to, Mara, for the minutes, um, I was asked if you could put in the minutes, uh, Sam Chapone did send. Uh, Sam Chapone did send an email and he would like it just in the minutes this evening. Um, so you could put that in the minutes. He sent an email of the quality of life Little Italy's C D B G process or their request. And he would like that included in the minutes, okay?
Yes, I see that.
Okay, very good. He emailed all of us, so I told him I would mention it and make sure that it was in this evening's meeting, or that it was in the minutes. Um, additionally, I just want to, for the record, mention the public forum that Carolyn Scripcheck is going to have on Monday from 10:00 A M. to 11:00 A M. And folks can call in at 518-279-7150, or they could email Carolyn. And I'll send you that notice if all of you have not received. So you could send it to your neighborhood organizations or post it on social media. And Mara, I think you have the new notice for Monday also, I hope. If not.
Yeah, Carolyn already published that. That's already been published.
Oh, okay, great. Okay. Was that in the legal notices? That's where I got confused.
Um, she, she and Charles posted it, published it, so I'd have to double check with them. But I think the email that she sent to you earlier, um, at the bottom showed that he had sent it to the Troy Record, but I'll confirm. They're in charge of publishing that.
Just to be fair, that's a public hearing from the, on there and not on this resolution per se, right? We don't, we're not, we don't get to tune into that.
It's not considered a council meeting as far as I know. It's the C D G B funding, you know, it's Carolyn's thing.
Right.
Right. And I, I do believe over the next 30 days, there will be other opportunities. I mean, people can obviously email or call Carolyn. But potentially maybe if we want to, just to get some public comments, we could always have a meeting or a forum or a public hearing if folks want to. So while we're here, if we can amend the language to the resolution, I think that that'll be helpful. I sent an email earlier. You'll see the ordinance. It will now officially go out for a 30-day comment period. And we do have a resolution in front of us. Mara, do you want to? How about you read the ordinance for introduction only, then you can read the resolu, read the ordinance for introduction only and then we'll hit the resolution, okay?
Okay, ordinance 23 is ordinance authorizing and approving the filing of the City of Troy's application for funding pursuant to the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974, the McKinney Act Emergency Shelter Grant Program and the Home Investment Partnership Program, and designating the mayor as the authorized representative of the city for such purposes. Council President Mantello at the request of the administration. Uh, and as you said, this is for introduction only.
Perfect. Can we now hit the resolution, please? Resolution 39?
Resolution authorizing the mayor to submit the City of Troy's five-year strategic consolidated plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, Council President Mantello at the request of the administration.
Yep, and this is for introduction only, but I will amend it to add the language that Carolyn sent earlier, which should include the one-year action plan. So now the resolution will authorize the mayor to submit the City of Troy's five-year strategic consolidated plan and the one-year annual action plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Do I have a motion? I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Great. Second, Council Member Zaliski, all in favor on the amended language?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, on the amended resolution, do I have a motion?
Motion again.
Motion, Council Member Zaliski, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Council Member Gully, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I thought the resolution was for introduction only, so why, I'm not sure why you're voting on the resolution.
Okay, we're not. So it's for introduction. I, I, I need, I need some items here, guys. You're correct.
Okay.
Um, so just. I'm sorry.
Motion.
Well, now the language is at least officially amended, okay?
Good job.
All right, and you know, I, I do want to just, you know, I, I just want to applaud all of us. And mostly, obviously, our, our fire, our police, our D P W. or D P U. Um, this is, you know, certainly a tough time for a lot of people. And our folks have really risen to the occasion. And, um, you know, we're very fortunate that our first responders, knock on wood, none of them have been diagnosed. Um, to date, Albany just found out five of their firefighters and five are pending um, with this, uh, just horrific virus. And I know, uh, you know, a lot of folks are going through a very tough time. And anything we can do, um, and Mayor, you've been wonderful. You really have, just communication-wise and, um, just keeping the morale of, uh, D P W., D P U. and our police and fire and all the folks. So anything we can do, I just want to offer, we're here. I know I'm speaking on behalf of all of us, but I think I, I can on that note. And, um, you know, certainly, I just want to, anyone that reaches out to anyone that's vulnerable, a senior citizen, um, it goes a long way. And get your mayor, I don't know if there's anything you want to, just apprise us of. Um, you know, obviously, you've been sending us emails and we've been in contact with Monica quite a bit. But is there anything else, um, you know, that you would like to add?
Not a whole lot. I'd really just like to commend the staff for the, for the effort they're putting in um, to try to continue to serve the public with significantly reduced capacity. Uh, we've taken a number of steps to protect the staff. You read some of that in the, in an email that I sent out earlier on an unrelated matter. And, um, uh, you know, the morale is, is good. People are worried um, about the future, how long this is going to go on. Um, we are putting out as many updates as we can so the public knows what they can expect from us. Um, and probably more important, what they can not expect from us during this time. Uh, trying to set expectations at an appropriate level. We have, um, two police officers in precautionary quarantine at this point in time. And we do have one police officer who does have the virus. I'm not going to mention names at this point in time. It was, does not appear as though it was contracted at work. Um, but that is continuing to be researched. We had a couple of firefighters who were precautionarily quarantined maybe a week or so ago. And they were, actually, that occurred at the last time we met in person. They're all cleared and they're all back to work. Um, the police and fire departments have done an outstanding job um, creating proper protocols that go above and beyond what's required. And actually, in having had a stockpile of protective equipment, we're burning through that now. Uh, and that remains one of our challenges is trying to replenish that. But, uh, we, we got off to a good start because of their preparations, uh, long before this pandemic struck. So, um, you know, the challenge continues to be trying to shift quickly as mandates come down from above with very little detail. Um, I think we've done a good job doing that. We scramble to get things in place as quickly as we can. And a lot of people are working very hard and, and it makes me proud to see uh, how they're stepping up at this time. They're going to be exhausted. Um, and at someday, we're, someday, we're going to have to pay the piper for all these hours that we're putting in, but, um, there, I can't say enough about how, how great it is to work with them.
Thank you so much, Mayor. And, you know, once again, anything we can do to help this, um, you know, this is bigger than, than all of us, but we're going to get through it. And, you know, Troy folks are, are strong and, uh, we'll get through it. And anything we can do to help you, we're here.
I think, and you raise a good point. I think that the message from all of us uh, needs to be realistic but optimistic. We will get, you're absolutely right. Um, the, the, we will not, the normal that we experienced two months ago um, may never come back. I'm, I'm guessing it never will. In a number of ways, we will be changed as a society as a result of this. But that change also opens up opportunities for growth and improvement as well as we reexamine the way we connect with each other. So I think the message is, you know, optimism, you know, take some time, take care of yourself. There's nothing more important right now than taking care of yourself. Um, there are a number of ways to volunteer in the community. We're building a volunteer page. If you have ideas to add to that, do that. People feel great when they volunteer. People are dying to help out and there's a lot of ways they can do that. Um, and like you say, even if it's just knocking on your neighbor's door and checking in on them, seeing if they need you to go to the grocery store or pharmacy. Um, those are, you know, small acts that you can do that mean the world to them. Donate blood, um, fill out your census, you know, just, let's just keep living.
Absolutely. And, um, on that note, um, we should all get back to our families. Uh, I have a son. I have to give a bath too. Um, so, uh, but, you know, um, let's all stay strong. We do have a finance scheduled, uh, for two weeks from now. Um, we'll see. In the meantime, it seems like day-to-day things are changing. Um, I'm now involved in the county conference calls. So, um, I'd like to apprise all of you of what's happening with that. And, um, you know, let's please keep in touch and, uh, let's, uh, keep doing what we've been doing, which is, um, staying strong and, uh, helping folks staying home and, uh, keep just pounding home the, uh, staying vigilant, uh, social distancing. So, okay, on that note, I will take a motion to adjourn if everyone's good with that.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion to adjourn, Council Members Zaliski. And I think Council Members Steele would like to second that motion.
I would, and I'd like to put in a word for, uh, the census. We need to, uh, make sure that we continue to push that out.
Really good point, Sue. Um, Mayor, while we're on that, um, I've been tracking, Sue sent me a really cool link where you can see how many folks are responding. Um, so, you know, I know that you've been all over this. You've been all over social media. You did a video. Um, you know, we're, we're really pounding at home, but, uh, certainly, um, I didn't, I did not. I did not look today. Um, has it gone up?
I didn't honestly get a chance today. I was kind of slammed and it's something I want to do every day. Uh, but you, you all can do it as well. You're much more active in social media than I am. I'm, I'm just, uh, you know, a generation above you. You know, you can go on that website. You can, you know, create, um, competitions in your district. If you want to compete with each other to, you know, and, and just blast it out and tell people to, you know, you want to beat District Three, you know, everybody beat District Four, whatever. Um, create a compet, anything that gets people excited about it and motivated. Um, but keep hammering it. Um, I think we'll do okay. Um, but it's, it's going to be a slog. It's not going to happen by itself. We're going to have to get out there and work.
Speaking of District Four.
Yeah.
Do you have any update on how students are being counted?
Yes, uh, students are being counted as if they are in school. And a very nice piece went out from, uh, R P I. Today. Um, and that, reminding them of that. And each of their instructors are doing online instruction now. Each of their instructors has been instructed to convey that message during the course of their instruction. Um, whether you can get an instructor to do that or not is another question. But, um, you know, school's making a very, very strong effort on that. Same at, same at Hudson Valley.
That's great. That's great. Did anyone else want to add anything? I, I don't want to adjourn if somebody wanted to add anything. Okay, awesome. Mayor, thank you very much. Let's keep in touch. Um, hey, Mara, I, I'd like to, if you guys are okay with this. Oh, we can't. It, it would be qualified as a public meeting. But anyway, um, let's try to keep in touch, whether it be texts or phone calls. And, um, thank you again. And we do have a motion. We do have a second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right, uh, good night and talk soon.
They say.